Let's call this meeting of the Rocky Mountain City to order. Before I begin with our prayer, I'd like to take this opportunity, if we have any veterans here with us tonight, either active or who served in the past, would you please stand at this time? If you do want to remember our veterans, we had a very nice service today at Memorial Park, and I know there were other recognitions for veterans across our city today, so again, we want to thank those that served, and thank you to your service to our community as well as to our nation. This time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Tom Rogers to lead us in prayer. If you're able, I'd ask you to stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, we pause to remember your goodness and blessings of this day, and on this day we especially remember the veterans who have served this country and their families. We will always be grateful for their sacrifice for us. We also know that this is a difficult world, and we pray not for tranquility or that our tribulations may cease, but we pray that you would give light to our eyes, hearing to our ears, understanding to our minds, and most especially, love to our hearts. Unite us, connect our spirits, and help us remember the natural bonds that we share as human beings. This is my prayer for us, the citizens of this city. Amen.
Assistant City Clerk Callum Rowe.
Here.
Blackwell.
Joyner.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Did you call my name?
I did.
Here.
If you just came in, we do have an agenda over here in the box as you walk in. Hopefully, you've had enough for everyone tonight. We're on item number four now, approval of the minutes of our regular scheduled meeting at the City Council, which was held October 14th, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? They are not going to be submitted, approved, or submitted to you. This time, I'm going to call on our City Manager for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. It certainly is an honor for me to inform you that I was just recently notified by the local chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, the Alpha Omicron Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Incorporated. Very humbled that they selected me as their 2019 Citizen of the Year. And I am humbled and honored, and certainly appreciative of the recognition, but I'd also like to say that I would share the acceptance of that award certainly with this council and with this community. We've been through a lot together over the past couple of months. I think we were coming out on the high end of things, and it took a lot of faith in God, my faith in particular, and the one that I serve, but also in reflecting on the commitment of public servants that sit on this desk. And we serve in different roles and different capacities. We come to these jobs with different experiences, but we all have one hope and one desire, and that is to make the City of Rocky Mountain the very best that it can be. So this recognition will be bestowed on me this coming Saturday morning at nine o'clock at the Tri-Father Ministries Church, and as I accept the award, again, I accept it on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we're going to move to item number six, which is petitions to be received from the public. I'm going to just read this statement. This is an opportunity for public comment. We thank you for coming to the City Council. We do value your input. If you'd like to address the council, you need to sign up. If you didn't get a sign-up sheet, we need you to go ahead and sign that so you can get it up here. If you'd like to address the council, any comment should be directed to the council as a whole and not individual council members or city staff. It's your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. In most cases, the council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the City Manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you come to the podium, speak in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Any personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated. We will give you three minutes, and we'll give you a heads-up in about two and a half minutes. So at this time, I'm going to go down the list here. First off, we have Dr. Koo, and then the second one is Robert Davis, and the third one coming up will be Gloria Davis.
My name is Dr. Koo, City Councilwoman of the Public. I am here today to follow up on my earlier, our earlier request that the Rocky Mountain City Council rescind its support for the Atlantic Coast Pipeline again. This time, I have with me 253 signatures from many people all across eastern North Carolina and environmental activists elsewhere. I was able to gather these signatures within the period of the last two months since my last request or my last petition. We want Rocky Mountain City Council to remove its blessings for the pipeline made in June of 2016. One can almost make the excuse that council members might not have all the information three years ago, but it is completely inexcusable for council members now to plead ignorance on this major issue affecting all of us, and especially with the recent upsurge in climate justice demonstrations nationally and internationally. We all feel the same urgency of the climate crisis by many of the young folks out there engaging in civil disobedience. They're protesting the inaction of powerful governments who are beholden to the rich and powerful fossil fuel companies. Meanwhile here, we can do something to positively contribute by preventing the Atlantic Coast Pipeline from happening. It's harmful to our environment, toxic to our waters and our air, unnecessary to our region. A single mistake will cause the loss of many lives if there is an explosion, or the continued seepage of methane contributed greatly to the global warming that is slowly killing us and irreparable damage to forests, rivers, and farmland it crosses. Within this stack of signatures are those of Representative James Galyer and Senator Erica Smith. I have put an asterisk next to their names so you can find them easily. I'm pointing this out only to illustrate that elected officials can also stand with us to fight climate change. I will hand over this stack to the Mayor now.
Good work, Public Information Director.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, and then Gloria Davis.
Good evening. My name is Robert Davis. I live at 1812 L.A. Avenue, Maryburg. I come before you this evening to grant us in Rocky Mountain a new beginning. We have that opportunity before us. All we have to do is claim it. That part is left up to us if we want it, and I hope we do. Let's turn a new page, try to create a new city. Eight cities, not two. We have a hard enough time trying to deal with one, and I know we were a bit of a failure trying to manage to. So if we turn this corner where we can see much success, let's try to manage one city, be one people in this city, Rocky Mountain, and go forward with one goal. And I hope we can, whatever this is out here in front of us, this block in the downtown hotel, that we can move that out the way, get started, and start our growth going a little bit faster in this city, because there's nothing negatively that's stopped it out there. We know that's petty robbery stuff. And so, again, if we want to be part of the city of Rocky Mountain, let's be positive members of Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Let's see, Gloria Davis, and then Samuel Battle, and then Bronson Williams.
Good evening to the council. I have questions. I don't know if they can be answered tonight, but I want to know when is the first meeting for the Work Force Housing Advisory Commission? And who will it be that, will it be a department head, or will it be an appointee to call the first meeting? And if there is an appointee, who was the legal appointee? And, you know, I have those questions, but I would like to see a swift movement with completed appointments, or just move forth with the ones you have already appointed and add on. Those are questions I don't know if you can answer them tonight.
No, but we will, if you're on the board, we'll let you know soon.
All right. Thank you.
So I have Battle, and Bronson, and then Neil Meyer.
Good evening, City Council. I just want to thank the City Council for writing the letter to my white family, the death of the Bang family. They had got a letter at the front. I want to thank, you might get upset, thank Ruby Blackwell, Andre Knight, for sending the letter to the front. And the number two thing is, we already got too much issue moving on with the police Department and everything like that. There's nobody bigger than the law, above the law. You know, the articles that came out in the newspaper, young man saying something about calling the chief and all that. If you're going to do that, every kid in this city may get out of jail caught, for real.
For what, sir?
For real.
Yes, sir. He's not going to talk about it, young man.
Excuse me for interrupting the lady. You can finish up this battle.
Yes. So, that's one thing. Number three thing is that we have sex offenders in this city. We got 451 of them, Nass County side. We have eight four on Edgecombe County side. We had articles about a month ago, some man pulled up on the school bus, wasn't even a school bus driver. This is serious about our kids, very serious. We can talk about everything else in this city, but you got people that are doing this right here in Rocky Mountain. Human slave, I mean, human trafficking slavery, man, this thing is for real. It's real in this city. These kids at the bus stop and everything like this, we talk about a lot of stuff, but these kids right here can get missing at any given time. We need to try to do something with these sex offenders all in the neighborhood and stuff like that. Nobody's, they overlooking that. They around school zones and everything. Who is allowing these people to be in school zones? That's what I'm trying to do. They're on probation and everything, they're only supposed to be around a school zone or anywhere with a daycare in, anywhere where the kids at.
Yeah, about thirty seconds.
So, I'm just trying to figure out who is allowing these people to come in the neighborhood around these kids? Who said, who the overseer over these people? This is a serious battle right here. And oh, you got 535 sex offenders from Nass County to Edgecombe County. Who child getting this nigg, this nigg?
Bronson, and then Neil Meyer.
Want to say good evening. Bronson Williams, a resident at 1611 Hargrove Street here in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I want to offer a happy Veterans' Day to all the active and retired members of our military. The reality of today's climate is that we're still impacted by Willie Lynch. African-Americans are still disproportionately affected by crime, poverty, unemployment, and incarceration. This is why I know that more police on the street will not solve our issues. We cannot arrest ourselves out of the condition that we find ourselves in. We must improve health outcomes, advance wraparound programs to strengthen economic and educational opportunities. It seems that we live in a city in which it's a bad idea or taboo to be black. The idea of blacks uniting is somehow an illegal activity. Let three or four black folks come together, and suddenly, they're up to no good. I urge this council to find dollars for out-of-school programs to help with homework and safe and positive environments, and before you think about increasing the budget for more police officers. We must strengthen our resident and police department relationships. Also, a few months ago, I asked this council about the status of the city's franchise agreement, whereby the public studio space currently offered by WHIG TV was in exchange for the carriage on our cable system. As of today, I've not heard anything of this body as it relates to whether that agreement is still in place and whether or not WHIG is discriminating against people who want to use the public studio space, because I would certainly hate for someone to be discriminated against that the city finds itself in a lawsuit. Somebody asked me what's next for Bronson. I will focus on being made whole again, letting people know their worth and finding their rightful place in this city. Thank you.
Neil Meyer, and then Elaine Williams.
Good evening. I live at 1620 East Virginia Street, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, 27801. Happy Veterans' Day to Councilman Bullock and Councilman Joyner. I see my friend Jabar's walking. Happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans and their spouses. Thank you for your service and for you fighting the good fight that I might have the right to free speech. I speak today from a position of concern for our city, therefore I have no fealty for anyone's feelings, just the truth. Racism in our city is a festering open sword. It is an ingrained social construct that even blind people can see. To pretend that it doesn't exist erases the experiences of African-Americans and other people of color, and it diminishes us all. Should we choose to ignore it, the progress we say we seek will never come to fruition. In the words of Alice Walker's C. Johnson, "Everything we think about is going to fail." I was confronted by the stark reality of the aforementioned racism recently while having breakfast at a local restaurant. I was sitting a few feet away from a table of white men, local businessmen, retirees, or political operatives, pillars of the community, some may even be in this room today. As my waitress approached, a woman of Hispanic identity, one of the men from the other table asked her name. "Aida," she replied. "Aida, I ate a whole donkey one time," he said.
Sorry. I didn't mention any names.
He said, "No names in here."
No names.
Okay, so I shouldn't have said Councilman Bullock's name?
Her name.
Okay, okay, anyway. Responded with raucous laughter. The woman was visibly disturbed, the comment didn't go over her head, but you could tell it was an unwelcome intrusion to her humane sensibility. In an effort to alleviate her discomfort, I let her know that I was sorry she had to endure such in my presence. Her response, "It's okay, sir." From them, I'm used to. What a sad commentary. But it didn't stop there. The men began to talk about how much they had spent on prostitution over the years, comparing the cost to that of an $85,000 truck, this within earshot of the waitress that's assigned to the area, all women of color. And when the lone black man joined them at the table, the talk instantly turned to him being a stud and somehow knowing all the women, the traditional racist trope of the over-sexualized black man. Government, business, and religious sectors of our community need to come together to address this issue, to simply say that it is not there or should be ignored, just won't do. When we don't acknowledge the very real ways in which racism has existed and continues to exist, both in individuals and systemically, by professing not to see race, we're just ignoring racism, not solving it. And like the second witch in the bed, by the pricking of my thumb, something wicked this way comes. It already knocked at the door, now it will come to rest in this chamber, more pronounced, but nonetheless corrosive, for hate always corrodes the container in which it is held. Thank you.
Elaine Williams, and then Johnny Cunningham.
Good evening, and of course, happy Veterans' Day. I want to talk about our young people, and our young people that go off to college, come back home, and want to do good for their city. I want to talk about how we sometimes beat them down, and we should make it so they want to come back and that they want to get involved. I can remember, even, I mean, can't call them names, but one of our city council people that sit in here now, that went off, came back, and wanted to do well in the city, and I can remember the newspaper having his name in the paper all the time, beating him up, beating him up, beating him up. We got to get away from beating up our young people. When they want to go off and they want to come back home and do well in their hometown, we need to make sure that we welcome them. And I'm not talking to you all, I'm talking just to our citizens as a whole. We got to stop beating up our young people when they want to come back home and do well in our community, because they are our future. So we got to stop cutting them out. We got to stop making front-page stuff that's not even front-page stuff. Why we allow this stuff to happen in our city? We got to stop. And another thing that I want to ask the City Council and our manager and Mayor and everybody is that, whatever is going on with Bethwood and whatever that audit, I need, we need to know what's going on with that. Something, and I'm sorry, I called another name, but I had to say a name, I think, to let you know what I'm talking about. But we want to know what's going on with that audit. When is this going to come to a closure? I mean, somebody needs to listen to something, who talking to whom, what's going on? Someone, please, I want to hear something back from somebody sometime, very soon, but please, thank you.
Well, I'm going to answer your last question, is that we haven't heard from the state auditor. They don't call us, they don't tell us what kind of update. Until they're finished, we don't hear anything.
Thank you.
Y'all are down there at 4546 Mary Road Street, Rocky Mountain. Good evening, citizens, Councilman Mayor Hope, he will be helping other people in the city. When I look at double hour LTV news every morning, there's a murder, or a robbery, or rape. It's not happening in Rocky Mountain, because Hope has been restored in Rocky Mountain, because this council, this government body has assisted in for the last probably two years that I've stood here and watched it, and proved it, has restored hope in the communities I live in. We actually implore some of these sex offenders, because they are in our neighborhood, but we're not looking at them for the crime they committed and they served at time. We're implementing programs through members of this council that has stepped forward and restored hope, helping other people in the city, not our city, but other people, including the citizens of Rocky Mountain. Ms. Small, I know exactly what you've encountered. I've been threatened, I've had someone actually tell me that they're going to beat me down to my white meat, then my yellow spine, where I replied, gave my address, my phone number, I'm still waiting, maybe three months ago. So I know what you've encountered, and for you to subject yourself to that type of treatment for the sake of the city and the benefit of the city, you bring hope. When you went to Tennessee and brought back an investor, African-American investor there, that brought hope to our community, Edgecombe County. Well, we, you know, this one, matter of fact, five o'clock news, they're already in. They interviewed a gentleman that lived in a community where all these murders are happening, and his reply was, "This is normal." And one of the activists from a community organization said, "You know what? That is unacceptable, when these communities and the people that reside in these communities lose hope, that is unacceptable." Rocky Mountain has restored that hope in these impoverished African-American communities. Downtown development, you know, you might not understand, but in 30 years, we have not had hope in downtown development until now. And like I said about the events, I said, I stood here, I said, "I don't care if you build a pole, erect a pole downtown."
About thirty seconds.
If it brings employment and hope, erect the pole. So whatever it is that you need to do downtown to restore hope back into these impoverished African-American communities, continue doing what you're doing, because it's working. We're all involved now, we're all united now. We're creating jobs. Matter of fact, I'm going to Long Avenue, that's the most treacherous community in the neighborhood. We've been working in that neighborhood for over 30 years. We're going to hire three guys out of that neighborhood, and I'm going to drive them there, and I'm going to pick them up. Thank you.
I give up. Leon Henderson?
Uh, I come this way?
Sure, absolutely.
My name is Leon Henderson. I live at 17 Mockingbird Lane, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I'm a citizen of Uphair Town. On April the 23rd, 2018, I've got to keep my years straight, this City Council adopted a resolution concerning red light cameras. Peter Barney gave a report showing that when they were installed the last time in Rocky Mountain, accident reduction after one year was 31 percent, total accidents 23 percent in rear and collision accidents, and 17 percent in angle accidents. As I said, the council adopted unanimous resolution that the staff be authorized to move forward with drafting the interlocal agreements with the city, I mean, with the school system, with the city attorney be authorized to proceed to obtain the required legislative part. And my question is, where do we stand on moving forward with red light cameras? Because there are a lot of accidents at red lights now, and they continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to propose the petitions to be received from the public item, and there were two agendas up here, so my, one agenda did not have item five with consideration of the minutes of a special call, the meeting of the whole meeting which was held on October 23rd, the recommended actions to approve the minutes. No motions.
So, second.
Motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? That does pass. Going to move on now to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. The first item, there is consideration of the following fiscal year 2019 ordinance amendments. One is a budget ordinance amendment appropriating the funds received from underwriter Laboratory Firefighter Safety Institute. It's for funds received as a grand prize from a national video contest in which the Rocky Mountain Fire Department and two other agencies participated. Item two is a project ordinance amendment appropriating additional funds for our brush transfer station. Item B is a temporary street closure. This is from Steve Getman, our city engineer, to an ordinance approving temporary street closings. This is for the annual Christmas parade. Temporary closures are along, I'm going to read that whole item if it's in your agenda. And then also added in an open meeting was a consideration of requests from Evangeline Bullock to close the 5,000 block of Marriott Street from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 16th for the main community yard sale and giveaway. The recommended actions to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the adoption of the ordinance. Motion by Councilmember Nine, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. Item eight is a public hearing. It's relative to the preliminary assessment role prepared to recover the costs incurred by the city in connection with the housing code enforcement on the following properties. A is 415 South Mercer, B is 30302 Middle Street, and C is 4144 Sunset Avenue. It is a public Item eight is a public hearing, it's relative to a preliminary assessment role prepared to recover the costs incurred by the city in connection with the housing code enforcement on the following properties. A is four fifteen South Mercer, B is three hundred and three oh two Middle Street, and C is forty-one forty-four Sunset Avenue. It is a public hearing, is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item?
I am, sir.
Yes, ma'am, and you can speak from where you are, and we'll try to bring the microphone to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. On Middle Street, I'm Dr. Ada Bulley, and I own the property there. It was in twenty fifteen, we were in the process of remodeling three hundred. The gentleman had completed most of the work inside, and then he painted on the outside. I had to go to the hospital, I was called and said that the house had been torched. May I go back? Before the remodeling of the house, inside, a gentleman and a lady. The lady was sixty-three, and the gentleman was fifty-three. It was a white man and a black lady, and they had run into the outside. Then we had to go back and do that on there. We never did get any consideration as to who it was. There was denial in every situation. I asked at the police department, and I have the paper, if you want to, I can circulate this. This is a confirmed police report. And I came to City Hall, they said, "No one saw it happen." But why would we have a police report with names and addresses, ages, and there is no police report? Now, this house had been there, my husband passed, so I was getting in the process of remodeling them one by one. And the minute that I started remodeling it, this is when it was run into, after we almost completed the remodeling, mysteriously, it was torched. So what consideration do I get as far as the expenses that have occurred since that time? I'm very disappointed, because no action was taken on this after being run into with the police report. The only thing I got was denial.
All right, I won't, because your time's about up. Be glad to have you meet with the city staff member and go over the items. We're here tonight because of the code enforcement, and if the council so chooses to withdraw this one from tonight, and allow you time to meet with the city, then I think they'll be happy to do that. You may not get to answer you want, but we'll try to listen and see what we can do to help you out. We have a motion to approve, adopt the resolution, confirm the assessment with taking item B out until we can meet with this.
I'm gonna make a motion that we remove item B, three hundred and three hundred and two Middle Street, and give Dr. Ada Bulley, you know, to have enough time to meet with Will Deaton and the police chief in reference to the issue at hand, and then bring us back the report.
Get somebody, get her contact information. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Then we will approve item A and B, and table items B, item A and B, and table item B until we can meet with the other. Item nine is a consideration of the minutes from the special call meeting of Committee of the Home held on October the twenty-third, the recommended action is to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Knight, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of certification by the city clerk of the sufficiency of petitions submitted for the annexation, this is on Old Mill Road in this contiguous, and to schedule a public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution of certification and sufficiency of petition for annexation. Two, adopt the resolution scheduling a public hearing for February the tenth, two thousand and twenty, and three, instruct the Department of Development Services to prepare a feasibility report.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Watkins, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is a consideration of a maintenance and software upgrade. We had a presentation before we came in here at Committee of the Home, this is with Motorola for coverage of the city's eight hundred megahertz radio system. It's a lot of money, but all these systems cost a lot of money to not only install them, but to maintain them and keep them up to date, especially when it comes to fire and police operations. The recommended action is to approve the option two, as recommended and authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Rogers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of cancelling the second city council meeting in December. Traditionally, we've done that, it's our second regular meeting day, it falls on December the twenty-third, and the city offices are closed that day. Recommended actions to approve the cancellation of the meeting.
So moved.
Huh? So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nine, second by Councilmember Joyner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The city clerk just informed me that we are not.
Plush, I'm not pleased.
Not plush, it'll be December the twenty-third, okay. Item thirteen is a consideration of two thousand twenty city council and committee of the whole meeting schedules, and the recommended actions to approve the schedules that were presented.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Joyner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item thirteen is approved. We do have an item fourteen, and it's attorney-client privilege, so we need to go into a closed session. I have a motion.
I have a question before we go into a closed session. Maybe, I just remembered, city manager, in reference to the schedule of Christmas activities within the city or downtown area.
Right, I don't have that report, you know, to be specific about activities, but it will be a very busy time in the city of Rocky Mountain. You might even recall, last year, Mayor Combs made the comment and requested that we give consideration to keeping the Imperial Center open, especially the day after Thanksgiving, when many families come to Rocky Mountain and need a place for their children and grandchildren to play. So, Department of Recreation staff is addressing that. We'll also look at the Christmas schedule as well, because school will be out, and I'm sure that parents will want someplace safe for children to go. At the next meeting, or even before that, we concerned to send out the final schedule for activities and events in the city.
I have some additional which I would give with you, from some citizens, just some recommendation. I don't know if we wanted to pursue that, but more or less consider that, and hopefully we would, I'd agree with you on that. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I think we need to add to the motion, go into a closed session for attorney-client privilege, but also add personnel matters as well.
Okay. All right, I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Knight, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you all for being here tonight.